Welcome, everyone, to the August 27, 2025 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. I'm Candace Breyer, chairperson of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is a nine-person volunteer board nominated by the mayor and approved by city council. First, we will hear from Planning Services, represented tonight by John Barrett. Then the applicant or their representative will make their presentation. Applicants will have five minutes in which to make their presentation. Staff will keep time and will announce when 30 seconds are remaining. Public comment is available in person or remotely. We will first call on individuals present to address the board, then remote participants. To speak during a public hearing or during public comment remotely, press *9 if listening by phone, or use the raise hand feature if viewing through the web link. For phone access, call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 938-1648-1007. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand using the last three digits of their phone number, or by name if available for those accessing through the web link. You will hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak. When speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any television or background sounds. We may ask questions of either the city or the applicant. We will acknowledge any written comments received by the board. We will allow an appearing party to express their support or objections. The board will then discuss the appeal and formulate a motion to approve the appeal. Five affirmative votes of the board will be required for an appeal to be granted. Finally, any qualified party who is aggrieved by a decision of the board can appeal that decision to the Washtenaw County Circuit Court on a timely basis. Roll call. Candace Breyer, I am here. Todd Grant.
I am here. I pressed my microphone button correctly.
Dave DeVardy.
DeVardy, here.
Patty Laskowski.
Here.
Julie Weatherby.
Here.
Drew Denson.
Mike Daniel.
Here.
Dharma Ackman.
Christina Glusak.
Here.
All right, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any questions or comments on the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion from Todd, support?
Support.
Thank you, Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to approval of minutes, we have minutes from the July 23, 2025 ZBA meeting. Are there any questions, comments, corrections to those minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from July?
So.
Thank you, Julie, support?
Sorry, support.
Thank you, Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to public hearings. First, we have petition ZBA 25-0020-470 Huron Parkway. John?
Good evening. My name is John Barrett. I am the zoning coordinator for the city of Ann Arbor. The first and only petition this evening is ZBA 25-0020, and the address is 470 Huron Parkway. Stephanie Chen, property owner, has requested a two-foot height and 50% opacity variance from Table 5.26-1 Height and Opacity Standards for Fences. The owners are seeking to install a new six-foot-tall full privacy fence that will be 35 linier feet in length in the front yard. The maximum height and opacity for a fence in the front yard in a residential district is four feet tall and 50% opaque. The property is Zoned R1B, single-family residential. The subject property is located on the east side of Huron Parkway, north of Geddes Road and south of Glazier Way. The house was built in 2015 and has approximately 3,342 square feet in size according to the city assessor's records. The subject property is seeking a variance to build a six-foot-tall privacy fence in the front yard. The proposed fence will be 35 feet in length. The property is located on a corner lot, and the proposed fence is to be installed in the front, in the yard that fronts Huron Parkway. A six-foot privacy fence exists in a portion of the yard currently. Staff was unable to find a permit for the fence. If you'll turn your attention to the monitors. The first slide, you see the subject property highlighted in the center of the screen on the location map. The next slide is the aerial map showing surrounding properties and existing conditions. And the next slide is the zoomed-in aerial photo of the subject property. Next slide is the boundary survey that was submitted by the applicants. And the following slides are photos and representations that were submitted by the applicant. This is a satellite view of their property. Next slide is another, like I said, these are all the slides that were submitted by the applicant with their application. This is a diagram that I supplied the applicant with, showing the different yards and what they could construct in the front, the side, and the rear. The applicants are proposing to, they're going to build a six-foot-tall privacy fence in the green in the backyard, which is a fence by right. And then, once it gets past the front facade of the home, and red is where they're proposing this six-foot-tall privacy fence, and 35 feet is the request for the variance tonight in this red highlighted section of this map. This is a rendering of what the fence is proposed to look like, a six-foot-high opaque wood dog ear picket fence. These are current conditions of the property, and once again, I'll let the applicants comment additionally if I don't describe everything to their satisfaction. This is the picture of, from the rear yard going out towards Huron Parkway, and you see the, I believe that's the high school in the distance. And you see on the right, the white fence, that's the existing fence, and to the left is the proposed fence. And the proposed fence that's incomplete, and the finished fence that was by right, the six-foot privacy in the rear yard. More photos of the property, of the side yard. This is looking at the front from the, from the property. Picture between the two, subject property in the right, neighboring property to the left, and the existing fence. This is the south side, the rear of the yard. Looking down the, the small cul-de-sac type of street down in the subject properties on the right. This is looking out from the property with your back to the property and looking north towards the development to the north. Condo neighborhood to the north. Looking down Huron Parkway to the west. Looking along Huron Parkway to the north. Another view of the surrounding area here on Parkway, the pay improved sidewalk in the subject property to the left. This is showing, looking directly at the property, you can see there's a significant buffer between the Parkway and the subject residence. Residence to the right, the buffer between the two, Huron Parkway and the residence. These are the photos that I took when I was at the property. And standing on the sidewalk, looking directly at the buffer and the houses in the, in the background, you can't see the house because of the buffer and the existing fence. And that pretty much completes my presentation, and I will take any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. John, questions? Christina?
Oh, go ahead.
Todd?
I'm always asking questions, so maybe we'll have Christine start first.
Oh, okay. You mentioned that there's a section that was built of the fence that you couldn't find a permit for?
Correct.
Which section is that?
Right here.
Oh, just that front?
This, and then right here. Comes up. Comes out right here, and comes down right here, this area.
So the whole west.
Yeah, I've talked to the applicants, and they said it was installed in that condition when they purchased the home.
Okay. And just what opacity would you say that existing fence is?
It's a, it's a full privacy fence.
Okay.
I mean, there might be some small gaps between the boards, but that's just from shrinkage over time.
Yeah. And the height?
It's six feet tall.
So that, that meets?
They're wanting to match that existing fence and connect right here with their existing.
That L shape, then, doesn't meet the opacity or the height as it's currently constructed?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, none of this does.
Okay. Thank you.
John, I have some questions for clarifications. This is exactly the shop that I wanted you to go to. How big, how many feet is the red line roughly?
35 feet.
Okay. So it looks like, if you're drawing little squares, that part of the red line is really on the side of the property that's parallel to Huron Parkway, and then part of it is parallel to the retaining wall. So maybe it's only half the red line, you know what I mean? If you're looking at a quarter. I'm just being, so that's just one comment. So the part, they're allowed to have a six-foot opaque in the backyard, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The green section.
Okay. Could you go to the very last photo?
Bear with me.
No, no, you can go back to, I want to see one with the white and the unfinished fence and the curve. Perfect, perfect. So the part that's okay is the white fence on the side, and all of the filled-in, built brown part is also okay, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I, what the applicant is really proposing is to extend the six feet to the end of the retaining wall. Is that correct?
So if you were to draw an imaginary line from the back corner of their house, which would be the southwest corner, and come across here, it basically, it runs perpendicular, I mean, parallel to the house, and then from this portion, that's the front yard that comes out this way.
Right. But it goes along the retaining wall. So they're talking about the high, the high fence, they're not talking about building a six-foot fence after the retaining wall ends, just to the end of the retaining wall?
Correct.
Okay. All right, all right. But it still looks to me as if part of the red line is really in the backyard, so maybe it's only half of the 35 feet.
Well.
You know, I mean, you know, we can quibble, but you know.
Yeah.
But essentially, they're asking, sorry.
Well, it's not a.
Go to the last photo, if you would.
Ah.
Yeah, there are a lot of photos.
Yes, there were. Let's see, I got to go the other way, I believe.
Okay.
You want to know the diagram?
The very, the very last photo.
The very last photo of the whole slide presentation?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, it would be the last one, right? Yeah, that's it. So, yeah, so they're just proposing to extend it only that little bit to the end of the retaining wall.
No.
No.
They're going to continue from here and all the way to, connect into the existing fence.
Okay. Does the city have a problem with them connecting, building the six-foot fence to the end of the retaining wall?
No. That, yes, because, so like I said, here's the corner of the house.
Yep.
Everything from this corner of the house towards Parkway is, here on Parkway, is the front yard. And so if you were to draw this imaginary line, it lines up right here, and this is where they stop the construction. And so they need the variance for this fence from here all the way to the connection to the existing.
Okay. So you could, in theory, divide your request into two. One is to fill in the little one, two, three, four, five.
Five sections.
Whole, sort of, five sets. And then they also want to complete it so it's a complete fence along the side of the yard, parallel to Huron.
The front yard.
The front yard. Okay. So a solution would be four feet along that, because that's what's required, but let them have the six foot along the retaining wall. Does the city have a problem with that? I guess technically.
Well, that, that would be something the board would have to decide, and that would be adjusting their request.
Okay. All right. Okay. Because originally, when I read this, I was thinking, well, they want to build a big six-foot, six-foot fence originally in the view of Huron Parkway, but that doesn't make sense because you can't see the house from Huron Parkway. But now I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You just went past a photo.
I think that diagram is, you know.
Yeah, this is the good diagram. Thank you.
That shows that the retaining wall stops right in here, and then it continues to this connection right here.
Okay.
And they've informed me that that's 35 feet.
Okay. Dave, did you have a question?
Yes. John, could you back up a little bit? You went right past a photo that I want to have up there. Right there. So they're asking for all of this, which you say is in the front yard, and then this...
I don't say that. The code says that.
The code says that. Okay. You're, right. You're the arbiter of the code for the, on behalf of the city. And there's also that little section there, which has no framing or no, but they want to fill all of that with six-foot fence.
Correct.
And I, I, okay, so that is clear, makes clear that they're going further than the retaining wall, or asking to go further than the retaining wall into the front yard. During discussion, I'll explain my mixed feelings about this. I was actually there and have another photo, if anybody wants, I could pass it down. That's coming. It's just to the right of this incline over by the retaining wall. I do want to say that retaining wall is like four feet high, or maybe more, and we're putting a six-foot fence on top of that. And I, my question is, how do people use this public land to the south of this site? Is, are there any trails in there, or proposed trails, that the city might have for developing this public land, which I assume is administered by the Parks Department?
Do we, does the city, I don't know of any future plans at this.
But it's, this is land administered by the Parks Department, right?
I am not sure of that, Dave.
Okay. Good enough, thank you.
So I have just a quick question. On these photos, it all looks like that original white fence extends farther back than what it looks like it extends in any of the photos? Have there been, I guess, section, yeah, that little loop, is that not there anymore?
That's correct. It's not there anymore.
Okay.
I think it stops right here, on my perche.
Okay. Any other questions for John?
I do have one more, actually. Is the applicant planning on running a fence the entire parallel to Huron Parkway behind the berm? Or are they just talking?
Well, there's already that existing, Todd.
Oh, okay.
It already, it already exists, you can see right here.
Oh, right. Okay.
And it all comes all the way down here.
Yep.
This, 35-foot variance for this right here.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to, yes, we're going to consider it non-conforming, because it was an existing fence, and we don't have any records of it, and the property owners have informed me that it was existing when they purchased the home, so. Not in the business of making people tear stuff down that existed, and we can't, we can't qualify, we'll say.
Dave? Keep this photo up. So the property boundary is the yellow line, so all this evergreen berm is on their private property?
Correct.
So really, the city has no control over that? That could just be torn down at some point by either these owners or a future owner?
Yeah, they, it's not a required landscape item with a site plan attached or anything that I'm aware of.
And if this variance is granted, could they essentially put an opaque fence all along that yellow line there along Huron Parkway? Or some future owner?
So if you, you might say that, you know, and the variance that's passed, or if it's, if it is passed, in the language, you could alter it and say only for this 35-foot portion and the existing fence in the southwest corner of the lot.
Okay, thank you.
If this is a condo development, that berm could be subject to requirements of that...
Yeah, maybe. There might be some type of deed restriction on that, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. That would be a private development agreement or private deed restriction that the city doesn't regulate.
Or regulate, yep.
Any other questions for John? All right, if the petitioner's here, if you'd like to come forward, please sign and state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes.
I'm Stephanie Chen, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My husband and I are here today to request approval for a variance that would allow us to reinstall a six-foot fully opaque fence in our backyard. This request began after storm damage accelerated the erosion on an already unstable slope in our backyard. This required us to install a retaining wall and remove a portion of the existing six-foot fence that was there before we bought the house. We would now like to replace it with the same type of fence, one allowed in backyards and side yards, to preserve safety for our family while having minimal impact on the surrounding area. Our property is unique because it directly borders Huron Parkway, a main road where cars often exceed the 40 mile an hour speed limit. This creates real safety concerns as well as elevated noise. We are also classified as having two front yards, but the area for our planned fence is functionally part of our backyard. Our property is also set back from the sidewalk and lined by a large evergreen berm, so any fence there would be at least 40 feet from the sidewalk and screened by evergreens. Finally, the property backs up to a nature area, which has a steep slope that required a retaining wall, so without a tall, solid fence, children could climb over, fall down the wall, or gain access to Huron Parkway. These potential hazards, proximity to a major roadway, an elevation drop, and adjacency to nature, combined with the positive attributes of distance from the sidewalk, natural screening, and no neighbors on three sides of the property, creates circumstances not typical for most homes in Ann Arbor. Given these hazards, we feel that a six-foot fully opaque fence is the minimum reasonable solution. Children can and do climb four-foot fences. A six-foot solid fence is far less climbable and eliminates hand and footholds. Blocking sightlines is also an important safety feature near hazards. An opaque fence removes distractions and reduces curiosity for kids who try and access what they see beyond the fence. Finally, it meaningfully reduces traffic noise and helps deter wildlife from the nature area that brings with it things like ticks and droppings. area that brings with it things like ticks and droppings. For us, these aren't hypothetical risks at all. They're very real. Our own kids love to climb things, including fences. Additionally, both my husband and my best friend knew young individuals who were killed when crossing a road nearby. Even if these risks seem small in other areas of our lives, we do everything we can to minimize risk. That's why we go through airport security, why pools close for lightning, and why pilots and surgeons have checklists, because prevention matters when stakes are life and death. Furthermore, the consequences of this fence are minimal for the public, because the fence we propose is set back, screened by nature, and maintains visual continuity. It wouldn't close off corridors, affect traffic sightlines, or alter the character of the neighborhood, which is in line with the spirit of the front yard fence ordinance. We did see four letters of opposition, but none were from people in our neighborhood. From the wording of the letters, they seemed to misunderstand the plan for the fence, either thinking it would be installed in front of our house, or next, directly next to the sidewalk in front of the evergreen berm, neither of which is the case. By contrast, all three of our immediate neighbors on our private drive submitted letters of support, since they understand the conditions and agree with the need for this fence. To summarize, this request is not about convenience or aesthetics. It's about safety, livability, and equity, given the unique conditions of our property. The challenges, proximity to a major road, elevation drop, adjacency to nature, are land specific. A six-foot opaque fence would allow us to protect our children, secure our yard, and reduce noise while still respecting the intent of the zoning rules. That's why we're here tonight, to respectfully ask for your approval of this variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Questions for the petitioner?
I always have questions, but somebody else may.
I'll pull my husband up, just.
Okay. Todd, go ahead.
Okay. A very nice presentation, and it's a very lovely house. And it's a perfect location, because you're right by the high school, and a baseball's hit away from the best park in the city. So it's perfect, with child play areas. But I have a couple of questions about what you said in your application, about the particular dangers. You mentioned children. How old are your children, if I may ask?
Yeah, they're two and four years old.
Okay. All right. So challenges. In the first, the practical difficulties, you talk about an increased risk of vehicle accidents, but you also state, which is clearly true, that the fence will be 40 feet from the sidewalk, well outside the intersection of Huron Parkway. You're not really alleging that a car would have an accident on Huron Parkway, skip over the sidewalk, whoop the berm, through the rocks and the trees into your yard, are you?
No, we're more concerned about children exiting.
Which children?
Like our children, or their friends, or, you know, anyone who comes to visit our house.
Because when reading this, you're saying you were worried about not your children, but children in general. I was thinking, it's not very likely that a 16- or 17-year-old from Huron High School is going to go traipsing in your yard. Has that happened?
Yeah, we're not, we're not concerned about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So it's really not children in general, but your children?
Yeah, and, or anyone just living in the property or visiting the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you also are concerned about deterring smaller wildlife. And when I read that, I was thinking, chipmunks and squirrels? I mean, I think we're all doomed to have chipmunks and squirrels. You can't really keep them out of your yard. What are you talking about?
Well, it's just something that we noticed when moving here. The number of, like, droppings in the front yard versus the backyard is drastically different. We don't really notice it in our front yard, but in the backyard, it's better to wear boots than flip-flops.
Yeah.
And not only that, but like, we're just getting notifications all the time of, like, various animals back there.
Well, Canada geese are not an endangered species, and there is bird flu. So those are somewhat of a concern.
That's true. I think we're concerned about the larger animals, like you mentioned, so like deer, and we have skunks and foxes that come in from the nature area, so.
Well, a deer can jump a six-foot fence. So I don't, I, in my opinion, an effort to deter smaller wildlife animals by building the fence is doomed to failure. What you're really concerned about, it sounds like, is your own children falling off the retaining wall. Isn't that really the core of your concern?
Yeah, or accessing the roadway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you, are you amenable, during the discussion, my questioning to John Barrett, are you amenable to an option of just extending the six-foot fence to the end of the retaining wall and then having four feet afterwards?
I mean, that doesn't really protect them from climbing over.
Well, first of all, your kids are two and four, and I don't know that the type of fence you're proposing is climbable even by a 10-year-old. Is that really a reasonable fear, that they're going to climb over, that they wouldn't be able to climb over a six-foot fence, but they could climb over a four-foot fence? I mean, you're asserting that, but I just don't know that that's true.
We have...
We looked into that, actually, a little bit in preparation. So we have found a couple of papers that actually looked into kids' ability to climb barriers and fences, and these focused on children between the age of, like, two and six, basically. But four-foot barrier, essentially, 100% of kids can get over. Even a five-foot barrier, about 30% of kids can still get over. So that's why our assertion that a six-foot fence is the most safe.
Well researched. Thank you. So if the six-foot fence only went to the end of the, of the retaining wall, your concern is they would get over a four-foot little gap there. But they could also get over a foot-foot gap and go through the evergreens and the boulders onto the street.
How about that, six feet?
Right?
Yeah, so that's why we would want the six-foot fence all the way.
All the way along, parallel to Huron Parkway?
Yeah, we were just hoping to maintain what's already there, which is a six-foot opaque fence.
I'm sorry. So the fence that runs parallel to Huron Parkway, that is it all six feet?
Yeah, it's, the entire thing currently is six-foot fully opaque, and that's how it was when we bought it, so it felt like a secure area for us and our kids.
So it's not supposed to exist, but because it's there, the city's not going to make it here again?
Yeah, that's something we didn't realize until we, you know, tore it down for the retaining wall.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it sounds like you really want the six-foot fence for the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. A very thorough preparation, well argued. Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
I have a question. How long have you been the property owner?
We moved there in 2022.
2022?
Yeah.
Okay. And you bought it, you toured the, you walked around the site, and you, you understood the site conditions during the process of evaluating the property to purchase?
Um, yeah.
Or was it sight unseen?
We understood, I think, what helped is that the owners, the previous owners, said, you know, with how the backyard was fully enclosed, the way it was, with the six-foot opaque fence, they said they felt comfortable with their young kids living there, and that, you know, helped us feel better about that, too. So we were just trying to, you know, maintain that, you know, after the retaining wall construction.
But you walked the site, so you saw all corners of the, of the property?
Um...
At the time of purchase?
Yeah. I mean, do you mean, we just walked around the whole area?
Yeah, I mean, you understood what you were purchasing at the time, three years ago?
Yeah. We didn't understand that it, that that side part was not permitted, and that it should have been a four-foot, 50% opaque fence, though.
But the corner was open, is open?
The corner was not. That's actually part of storm damage that we talked about. So part of our long-term plan is to actually reinstall, like, arborides, you know, it provides, you know, additional protection, and so we're planning, that used to be like a closed-off area, and it...
So you can see on this picture, there's actually kind of a corner fence that's still, that's there, because this picture was taken before that fence got taken down for the retaining wall, and so we're seeking to restore that.
Well, yeah, I don't know that we fully, the other thing that we learned through this process of the retaining wall is that there's an easement there, for a sewer easement. So I don't know what we can do, but we're going to add in, we would like to add in arborides wherever we can, just to kind of...
So the condition of the property has changed?
Yeah.
Due to?
Storm damage.
Some storm event?
When was the storm damage done?
It was 2023.
Okay.
It was like, a pretty crazy, yeah, we, there were a bunch of really big trees that fell down in the nature area. They actually are the ones that knocked down our trees, as well as our fence, at that time as well, so.
Is that when the soil erosion occurred, too?
That was already, something we didn't realize, that it was like, slowly having an issue, but then once we moved in, we were noticing the gap underneath the fence getting, getting larger.
Okay.
So we had to board that up. And then we lost a ton of trees on the, on the south side of the fence, and so that kind of, just there was no, like, like, greenery and stuff, like, that all got damaged, and so the slope just got worse.
To summarize, you guys moved in, the fence was already there, you had a big storm come through, knock down part of the fence, you had some soil erosion as well, and so you guys built a retaining wall, and when you built that retaining wall, you took down part of the, the other part of the fence that wasn't hit by trees or whatever, and then you just want to put it back so that you have a fully enclosed backyard?
Yeah.
That matches, right?
So it was all fenced before the storm?
It was all fully fenced.
Like, fully around? There was no breaks in it?
Yeah, there was also no gap down there, because we thought it was like, fully just secluded back there with no access. I don't really know what the rules are now, that we've learned that there's an easement there, but that's like, just next steps for us to figure out.
Dave?
So, following the storm damage, so the fence pre-existed, there's a six-foot fence all around here, when you moved in, and following the storm damage, you not, you had to put that retaining wall, because there's significant sloping in there. I mean, any extra ground cover you could put to minimize erosion, I advise you on your property to, to do that within reason. I think erosion is going to continue to be a problem, but I, I was out there, that's a substantial retaining wall that I imagine was some substantial expense for you to put in.
Yeah.
And now you just want to restore the fence as it was?
Yeah.
When you moved in?
Yeah. And then, I don't know if you saw that bare area behind the retaining wall, our plan is to, like, that was full of invasive, like, honeysuckle and buckthorn.
Right.
And we're now planning on just, we're not planning on using that area at all.
Right.
It is part of our property, but we're going to just plant, like, native wildflower seeds, like, the whole area, and just leave it at that. So that's why we, we don't really plan to use this area, we just want to have, like...
So what's on the screen right now, this kind of bare area?
Yeah.
My fear is that, because there's continuing sloping to the, further to the south, is that if that remains bare, there's going to be continued erosion on future heavy storms.
We agree.
And since that's your property, anything you can do to help contain that erosion or mediate it would be very helpful. Even the sod that's in here, it looks like relatively new sod. I don't know what the sewer easement is in there, and I know trees, sewers don't like tree roots, but any sort of things with deeper roots that you could put in the sodded area would be helpful as well. And it's clear to me that you're very aware of the ongoing erosion danger from future storms, so that's a substantial retaining wall. I compliment you for putting that in there.
Yeah, 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 well, definitely, I mean, it's, we're hoping that the whole thing is covered with wildflowers. I heard it takes two to three years for it all to grow in. The sod here was put in because just from, as immediate solution to the erosion, so that's why we put that there.
Mike?
John, so we, there's no full, there's no evidence either way of what that looked like before the storms in 2023, right?
I don't, I don't have any pictures.
It, yeah, it's just that fence line right there, and that was all a six-foot...
Fully fenced, no gaps. It just was all the way?
No gaps.
Okay.
I could, I don't have a photo somewhere, but...
You seem like very trustworthy people.
Yeah, we would not, yeah. We would not lie about that.
Any other questions for the petitioners? All right. Thank you very much. At this point, we will open the public hearing, so if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this petition, I do not see anyone here in person, so if there's anyone accessing the meeting remotely, please press star nine or use the raise hand button.
There are no callers at this time.
All right. Thank you, John. I will note, we did receive several emails and letters regarding this petition, so we have a letter of objection. Does not list an address, just lists a name as the Gettys Lake couple. We have a letter of objection from a 26-year resident of Gettys Lake condominiums. We have a letter of support from Jennifer and Stephen Cowan at 500 Huron Parkway, a letter of objection from June and Dennis Gordon, a letter of support from 480 Huron Parkway, a letter of objection from Carol Texley at 737 Skynob Drive, a letter of support from Deb Weinstein and Tony Rosen, Rosenzweig at 490 Huron Parkway, and a letter of opposition from Kirk Westfall in Ward Two. With that, the public hearing is closed, and we are in discussion. Dave?
I'm going to support this. It was a pre-existing situation. I think the homeowners have done everything they can, could to humiliate the storm, erosion from storm damage, and they're just asking to restore the situation that was there. I did, I could not tell there was a fence behind those evergreens. I walked up and down Huron Street, and when I read those letters of objection, and my sense was, people were reading, reading this application as if there was going to be a new fence in front of those trees, changing the look of Huron Parkway, which is, was designed in the early 1970s to be a parkway with a close-to-nature look. That is going to continue to exist. The fence that's still there is invisible. You can't see it. I tried to take a picture of it through the trees, and you could barely see it. The, the fence that, even though it's in the front yard, the shape of it is also shielded by, from view from Huron Parkway by the, by the trees that are, exist there. My hope is that they would put some more trees, as long as it doesn't interfere with the sewage there, but I don't see any issue with the way people are going to see this fence. Normally, I would be against this, you know, I would say, can't you use a four-foot fence? But to me, it's, there's going to be no view of this from Huron Parkway, as far as I can see, and those are evergreens, they're not deciduous trees, although a couple of them are deciduous trees. I think that screening, the foliage screening of the fence will be very effective in maintaining the look at the parkway, so I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Mike?
So for me, the key piece of information is, there was a fence there before the storm. We don't have any evidence, but I did go look at Google Earth. As of 7/19/2023, it appears there was a fence that went all the way around there. So the, the storm happened after July 19th in 2023, which very well could have been likely. I'm, it just, I already believed you, but the fine folks at Google have backed you up here, and I'm going to vote for this.
Christina?
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. So I couldn't resist it. I'm somewhat on the fence about this. So I do agree that it would be restoring something that existed before that wasn't in compliance with the zoning ordinance. The big problem I have is the first criterion we have, is the practical difficulty unique to this property? It is not. Heritage Drive just to the north has houses that are right along Huron Parkway, albeit they don't have a retaining wall, and I'll address that in a minute. There have to be hundreds of houses in Ann Arbor with small front lawns on busy streets. There have to be hundreds of houses in Ann Arbor with small front lawns on busy streets. Jackson Road, Dexter, Ann Arbor Celine, people watch their kids. That's just what it is. And the extreme case, of course, is they knew this situation when they bought the home. The archetypal silly case along this line is people who move next to an airport and then complain about the noise from planes that are taking off. You know, they knew about it when they, when they came there. So it's not a unique situation to this house in terms of needing a fence that's six feet. I do agree that they need something over the retaining wall to finish it, for their now two- and four-year-olds. But, you know, when these kids get to be 10, they're not going to want to play in the yard. They want to go to Gallup Park. And people watch their kids. They, the new parenting style is that they really watch their kids. You know, I was let out in the morning, and I had to be back by 6 o'clock, and ran all over the place, and my parents had no idea where I was. But nowadays, they know where their kids are at every minute. I, the problem that bothers me about this, they were very articulate about why they wanted, but I think they pushed and exaggerated their dangers. You can't keep little wildlife out of your property. And Canada geese are sort of annoying down at Gallup, but, you know, that's the nature of being next to Gallup in a wildlife area. And for chipmunks and squirrels and deer, they're not going to keep the deer out. The deer aren't going to leap the four-foot retaining wall and the six-foot fence to get in, but they will go the other way. And they also have other parts of the property they can easily get into. They can go up the driveway. You know, deer occasionally, once a year, show up, and my wife's in my property. And there's not really a danger from traffic accidents. I think that's a false claim. So they have a concern about their children, and they do need to have something over the rest of the retaining wall. Do they need to complete the rest of the fence? I don't know that they do, because when the retaining wall's in, you have a nice grass sloping area down to the road. There are so many, again, so many families in this town that have little front yards on busy streets. And yes, it's a danger. So that's the main argument against it. The main argument for it is, who the heck is going to see this fence? Nobody. It's not going to bother anybody. So that's where I am. Those are the two things that are pushing back and forth. And I guess I'd like a little help from my zoning board colleagues here.
So I was just, oh, where are you going? Okay. I don't know where I'm going with this, but, so the fence won't help with erosion, right? I mean, I sympathize that there's a tricky situation that occurred based on a storm, it sounds like, in around 2023. And they had to put in a lot of expense to, to make it safe again. But the fence, correct me if I'm wrong, but they can still build a fence that meets the code and continue the enclosure of their, of their back lot, of their lawn, right? I mean, they still have that option to build it by code without this variance request. So I, I feel because of that opportunity and option that they have, we can't control human behavior either, you know, and, I mean, there's wildlife all over the city. We, you don't want to, I don't feel like we're in the position to control wildlife. Deer will jump just about everything anyways. So I, right now, I'm not in support of, of the, of the request right now. But I'd be happy to hear other, other takes on this as well.
Patty?
I think the largest influence factor for me is that the fence was there. So like to Todd's argument about an airport, right, if you're moving next to an airport and complaining about them, it was very, this doesn't really hold true, because the fence was there, right? And they're buying a house with a fence, with a six-foot, you know, whatever opacity that was like the fence in the house came with, right? And not with any luck of their own, the storms, right? They lost part of that fence, and they're just trying to reestablish with what they had and what they purchased the house with. So in my opinion, like, nobody's going to see it. It's going to connect and work with the rest of the fence, so like, why not just let them? So I'm in favor.
Julie?
Yeah, I'm mixed on this, too, because I agree with that, but I also think, I mean, I live on Main Street on a corner lot with a, that slopes down, and like, I don't think that I would be allowed to put up a fence. Well, I know I wouldn't be allowed to put up a fence there. And that was six-foot tall with 0% opacity, and so, or 100, yeah. And so it's, and there are, I'm on a corner, so there are three other houses that are just exactly that same way. And it, you can put a fence here, you can put a fence and put, you know, bushes in front of the fence or bushes behind the fence. And so it's just, it's a little hard for me, because I can't take into consideration the kids or the, because you could sell the house tomorrow. And so we can't take that as, it's the house or the building and the lot, not who's living in it that we have to consider. And I, I think it's, it's tricky for me, because there are a lot of places that are like this, and we do have criteria that we're supposed to look at. And I don't know, but also I feel like, yeah, you bought a house that had a fenced-in yard and just want to replace that fenced-in yard. And so it does, again, thanks to Google, it does, you know, the, it looks like the fence went in in 20, sometime before July of 2018. So at least in an area there, so. But, yeah, I'm, I'm still conflicted, too.
You're on the fence.
Oh, yep.
John, do you happen to know if there's any kind of requirement, and it's probably a building code thing, that there has to be something on the top of that retaining wall to, like some kind of a fence or barrier because of the height of it?
I'm not aware of any type of barrier that's required.
Okay.
Be a building code thing. I know just that once, once a, a retaining wall exceeds four feet in height, it requires a building permit. But I think, I've just seen retaining walls around town. I see a lot of retaining walls that just have grass, and then the retaining wall, it ends, and that's it. So. I'm not sure if there is a, any type of artificial type of barrier required on top. I don't think there is.
I'm ready to make a motion if you'd like.
Mike?
Real quick, I just want to say Julie makes some really good points. I will say the difference with Main and here is this is 40 miles an hour, Main's 30, right? So they're different roads. Cars speed a lot faster here than on, on that section of Main Street. That is a, that is a difference. Not saying it's enough to make anyone change their vote, but that is a difference between this lot and your lot.
But houses are closer on Main, so stopping time is, I don't know how to, you know, set those as parameters.
Fair enough. Vote, vote how you feel. I liked Todd's second argument. Who the heck cares? Todd Grant, five minutes ago.
No, we care.
That was your argument. Todd, it was a good one.
With all, with all due respect, I just, I don't think the speed of the traffic has anything to do with this.
How about it being bad at high school, right? Like, I don't think that's, historically, your teen drivers are the greatest drivers in the world, so.
I'm ready for a motion.
Are we ready for a motion? Is there more discussion?
Good to go.
Go for it, Dave. Thank you.
ZBA 25-0020, 470 Huron Parkway. In accordance with the established standards for approval, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a variance of two feet in height and 50% opacity variance from table 5.26-1, height and opacity standards for fences. The owners are seeking to install a new six-foot-tall full privacy fence that will be 35 linear feet in length in the front yard. The fence is to be built per the submitted plans.
Thank you, Dave. We have a motion. Do we have support? Thank you, Todd. Patty?
Yes.
Christina?
No.
Dave?
DeBarty, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Julie?
No.
Todd?
Oh, yeah, I'm going to say yes, because I'm a whip. We have to break rules every now and then.
Oh, God.
Okay, Ken, no pressure here, Candace. We can take a 10-minute recess.
I'll also vote yes. The request is granted. Moving on to unfinished business, we have none. New business reports from council. Dharma is not here. Communications, I believe we addressed all of our communications as part of our public hearing. Public comment. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on any matter whatsoever, now's your chance. Please, there's no one here. But if there's anyone remotely, please press star nine or use the raise hand button.
There are no callers.
Thank you, John. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you. Patty, support? Julie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.